I will call and meet the meeting of the City Council of Soderville, regular session, for seven twenty-one, twenty-two, open. Let's stand up, please, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call?
Mayor Roger Perry.
Here.
Council President Adina Oliveras.
Present.
Councillor Jeff Hensley.
Here.
Councillor Ray Jackman.
Here.
And Councillor Ryan Lewis. We all have, we're all here, we have a quorum. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And how about our visitors, they please state their names. So for the record.
Joanna Mann, from the Democrat Herald.
Logan Hennigan Downs, also from the Democrat Herald.
Okay.
Peggy Bishop, citizen of Soderville.
That is Scott, Councilwoman.
Ryan Vogt, from Oregon Cascade West, Council of Governments.
Tim Burley.
Okay. I don't know if we did, do we do our public people too?
Yes.
Okay, we got that.
We're here.
Okay. Let's miss that.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion to pay the bills from last, let's see, I don't think those look like the bills or not.
Yes, probably a good idea for Councillor Jackman to recuse himself on the bill payment because we had to pay some money for Lebanon Water Trucking this last month and that was on the bills list this time, so.
I make the motion that we pay the bills.
Have a second, ladies and gentlemen. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain or deny?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion to accept the minutes for six sixteen, twenty twenty-two.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Vote carries. How about a motion to approve the minute for six twenty-three or twenty twenty-two?
I make a motion to accept the minutes for six twenty-three.
All seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote carries. Okay.
Abstain. I wasn't there, we go.
You're abstaining?
I am abstaining, yes, I was not here.
Okay, so this is the time of public comment, this is the time to speak to the City Council or Mayor on any subject including what is listed on the agenda except for public hearings, limit time, three minutes per person. Do we have any public comment? Okay, going on. City Recorder Report.
All right, we have a few things here on the agenda. First, I will talk a little bit about what I have been up to. So I finished a project recently to digitize and put online all of our city ordinances and resolutions and I am going through those to figure out what we do and don't need to still have on the books, there are a lot of things that do need to be amended and updated and we will try and make that as painless as possible. I remember last meeting wasn't super fun because we had five million ordinances to go over. This time there's just gonna be two and the future will keep it to just putting two ordinance amendments on the meeting as needed. So that's the, that's the big thing. Over the last couple of months, really since I started, I've been reaching out to people who are running for office to talk about Soderville's water issues. And over the last few months, we've met with just about everybody running for office to represent us in Congress, the legislature, and the Lynn County Board of Commissioners. The only person we haven't met with in person is Representative Jamie Kate, who's running for this district. We met with the Democratic nominee for the House recently. I am friends with Jamie Kate's chief of staff, so she is familiar with the issues because of that. And that's the kind of thing that we've been talking about. Adina's been to a lot of those meetings with me, so has J.D. We went to the Lynn County Board of Commissioners last week and we talked to the commissioners about our water problems, what we're trying to do to fix it. Really, I think it's kind of crunch time to figure out what exactly we're gonna do when it comes to water because there's a lot of interest right now in finally doing something about it. So we're just gonna need to figure out a direction and a plan by the end of the year and, you know, give it to whoever gets elected so something can be done about it. We will be discussing that a little bit more in detail during the Public Works Report. And today that, it's just gonna be about what directions do you want to pursue and not make your final decision today, just so we know what's up. So the next one is the League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priorities. So I sent everybody a copy of the list of the League's priorities and I got four responses from the councillors and I listed everything that was voted on by everybody in order of preference, so I wanted to make sure we wrote down what we wanted to support. And then after that is done, we're going to have to have you vote to designate me to submit the legislative priorities to the League of Oregon Cities. You can designate any city official you want, it's just usually the city administrator in a lot of cities is the person who does that, so that's why I put myself down there, just because that's how basically everybody does it. So in order from the most popular, infrastructure, finance, and resilience, so this was actually at the bottom of everybody's list, but it is the only one that was on everybody's list, so I put it at the top. Next up was return to work, this is something that specifically affects PERS enrollees, so we don't have anybody on PERS at the city, so it doesn't affect us. Number three was property tax reform, I do want to make sure we're very clear about what this means, that there were constitutional amendments passed by voters in the early nineteen nineties that limits property tax rates to five dollars per assessed thousand, and then Measure fifty, which limits the increase of assessed value per year. So by supporting this, we are asking the League of Oregon Cities to lobby the legislature to refer a constitutional amendment that either amends these or does away with those entirely. So I just want to make sure we know that's what, that's what we're voting on. Last one, or number four is marijuana tax, and that is increasing the cap on local marijuana tax rates. We don't have marijuana in town, so it's not going to really benefit us either way. The state has additional taxes on marijuana and that's not what's up for debate, so it is just that one. And then number five was place-based water resource planning, that is one I think definitely benefits all of us. Those were the, the top five, so I just want to make sure we're, we know this is what we voted on and you're good with having me submit these based on what was voted on.
I have a question and a comment.
Yes.
On the marijuana tax, do we not get revenue from the marijuana tax in the state?
We do. So this, this specific measure would be to have the legislature make a change. Right now, cities have a cap of three percent on their taxes. We don't have any marijuana facilities, therefore no taxes, or no city taxes. We do get state tax revenue sharing from it, but that, this measure does not affect that state rate.
And then my second one is if we, after more review, have reconsidered about the property tax and we put it as one of our priorities and now no longer want it to be, do we just tell you that in our vote, or?
I guess I'd want more clarification on that anyways, right? Because you're saying that it was passed by the voters in the nineties.
Yes.
To cap it at five dollars per assessed thousand?
Yeah.
So you're saying that if we approved this to go forward, that this would give the state legislation the opportunity to appeal, repeal that?
So this would, this would tell the League of Oregon Cities to lobby the legislature to refer these back to the voters.
Okay.
So the legislature could do that anyway, this is just saying that we as Soderville want the League of Oregon Cities to do this on behalf of all cities, to refer that back to the people, either a completely repeal or an amendment or something like that.
Right.
So in essence, shooting to the core, increased property taxes?
Yes.
Potential.
Yes. Yes.
Seems like they already increased many of them.
They have.
Every year, it seems like it goes up, so.
Yeah, the, the goal is that, right now, before these measures were put in place, there was a lot of volatility because there were no caps. This, the, the thing that a lot of cities have been trying to do for quite some time is just remove it altogether so there are no caps once more and we can have whatever property tax rate we want, so.
That is scary.
That is very scary.
One more thing too is, you know, I mean, I don't like the order, so this is not the order that you're gonna be presenting it, right?
So the order was, people were supposed to rank one, two, three, four, or five their favorite priorities, so the averages were calculated based on, you know, if we add all the ones that were one together and then we compute that, we get the averages there and then they're ranked in decreasing order from people's preference. So if we want to change the order, the council could vote right now to change the order.
Because our top priority is number five, well, you have number five right here, right?
Yeah.
It's for water infrastructure. I mean, I mean, it seems like it came in with two point five, so there's more councillors that voted for that.
So more councillors voted for that specific level of prioritization. The, the higher the number, the further down on the list means the fewer people wanted it to be prioritized.
Oh, okay, well, I may be in the minority, but I figured that's probably our city's biggest.
Honestly, I think you're right, but that was just the, the calculation, this is the way the League of Oregon Cities likes it to be tabulated.
So I didn't really like the way this being, as, you know, touted as our number one priority because it's not.
Yeah. Well, again, this was the, this was the only one that had consensus among everybody, which is why it's at the top.
And this is due when?
August nineteenth. So we, we do have time right now to say we want to reorder this list or we want to put something else on here.
Or to revisit.
Well, let's see, our next city council meeting.
I'm not a big fan of number three either, I mean, that shouldn't even be on our list.
And I don't understand PERS because it really doesn't affect us.
Yeah.
Had to pick one, that was me, I picked it just because out of the five, that was the next one that came in.
So I think we're in luck because it's due on the nineteenth and our next regular city council meeting is August eighteenth.
Okay.
So if you would like to table, if someone wants to move to table this to the next meeting.
I would like to.
Okay. All right, we'll need a motion to that.
I make a motion that we table these, what are they?
Priorities.
Well, these priorities.
To just table the item until next meeting.
The League of City, League of City ordinances are priorities until next meeting, ever how it comes out.
Have a second on that?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next one, we're going to talk about Oregon Cascade West Council of Governments. So when I, I wrote this item originally, I was a little misinformed about our status in the agency, so right now, Soderville adopted the order, the agreement on the creation of the Oregon Cascade West Council of Governments way back in the eighties. Some time or another after that, the council made the decision to no longer actively represent in the same way they were. Right now, we are represented by the Lynn County Commissioners, they pay our dues, but that also means that we don't have a seat at the table specifically anymore. The entity is still there to serve people in the area, but until we pay our dues ourselves, we don't officially get a vote at the table. So I think it's pretty important for us to be involved in this entity, they provide a lot of services to people in the area, you know, all of our, you know, there is some, you have tax funding anywhere that comes out of it to help pay for this, so the idea is to make sure that our people are properly represented by us at the table. And here to talk about this more is Ryan Vogt, he is the executive director of the Oregon Cascade West Council of Governments.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Yeah, I'm the director for the Oregon Cascade West Council of Governments and I don't know if you're familiar with our organization, but Council of Governments is a voluntary government entity where local cities, counties, tribe, ports, and all assemble to create another government entity to do work on behalf of local governments. We have a couple of major bodies of work, I provided some information to Alex on kind of our annual report and I think that was just yesterday, so probably haven't had a chance to review that yet, but we really have a couple of main bodies of work that we do in the Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln region. Our probably our biggest footprint is in social services, we run the seniors and people with disabilities program on behalf of the state with the area agency on the agents, so we do Medicaid determination for seniors, we do foster care for seniors, we license foster homes, we help people get in-home services, we've kind of the whole gamut of everything related to senior care. We also do community and economic development, so we are the seat for the Economic Development Administration at the federal level. And what that means is we're a great vehicle for getting grand dollars from Economic Development Administration into our area. We do a lot of work on transportation planning, we host the Cascades West Area Commission on Transportation, which is a group that helps inform Department of Transportation on our transportation desires and needs in the region. We also seat the two metropolitan planning organizations, which are also transportation-related by the most part. Yeah, and then we also do a community service program, so we do the senior volunteer program, we bring in money from the older Americans Act to do a number of volunteerism things, we run the Wheels on Wheels program for the three county area. So we're kind of out and about doing a bunch of stuff. Now, why does any of that matter to you? A lot of that stuff, if it, if that touches you already, then we're doing it anyway. However, we also, one of the beautiful things about being a voluntary organization is that we try to do our best to streamline things and make it easier, so lots of cities can afford a full-time planner or sometimes a full-time financial services person, or sometimes a full-time technology person. And we have members on staff that we provide to member agencies at discount to help provide those services. So we have a land use planner on staff right now that, you know, does work in Sweet Home and does work in Toledo and everywhere in between Airville and Chippewa and is running around helping with situational issues for land use. We're also in the middle of lobbying right now, the Infrastructure Committee, to get funding to bring on specific grant writing positions because most of our smaller cities throughout the region don't have, don't have the time to even figure out which grants to chase, nonetheless have the expertise or the time to write for grants. And so our plan is to bring on one or two grant writers specifically to tap into the money and help cities tap into the money for the Infrastructure Act. Now, it's not a done deal yet, we do have, we did get an eighty-five thousand dollar grant partly from Business Oregon and partly matched by the Ford Foundation specifically for rural communities, so we are trying to tap into money there. And we're also running the broadband initiative for the three county area. So our, our fingers are in a lot of different things and we've got, I've got some real passion around the more rural piece. As Alex mentioned, we have a board of, we have about twenty-four members right now and for cities that don't, that aren't member entities, the county is currently picking up a part of the dues for your population. Our board is one person, one vote, so if you decide to reinvest in our organization as a member agency, not only do you have access to those kind of all the card services like planning and things like that, if we can help you with that, but it means that you have a seat at the table and your vote about what are the priorities for our agency is as important as Mayor Alex Johnson's out of Albany or, you know, Commissioner Sherry Springer out of Lynn, so you carry just as much weight in terms of that vote. I also like to tell people the secret is also not everybody shows up. So the people who show up have, you know, exponentially higher voting potential than that. Anyway, I'm really just here to answer questions, I'm not expecting you all to make a decision tonight or what have you. I think, I think I said we went back and calculated the dues and if you were to engage this year, it would be seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and some change. It also provides access for Alex, I host a monthly city manager, city administrator, county administrator meeting where he would be able to come and meet with all of his peers and talk about issues going on at the city manager level. So, anyway, thank you for having me, I just wanted to come, it's been a number of years since Soderville's been a member, so I didn't know if anybody was even aware of our services, but I thought I'd show up and, you know, I'm here.
I've had the council on when they've hoped anybody here and I didn't start the eighty ones.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Ryan, for that, I wanted to clarify, when I wrote this, I, I think I had expected there to be some decision-making tonight because I didn't have all the information that I thought I had, so tonight won't be a decision-making night, it'll be more of an information like, do we want to formally rejoin so that next meeting we can put a payment for a bill on the agenda, we can get it invoiced and have the council officially vote, yeah, we want to do this again, so that's kind of the framing for where to go next with your discussion.
And just if I may, we had our board meeting today and I let them know there's, there's several cities that are not currently members and there was some real excitement around the board for people maybe joining and being part of it, particularly Lynn County. Lynn County's had a kind of a dearth of board members actually showing up and so there's some real excitement there. But our next full board meeting won't be for two months, so from my perspective, there's not a whole lot of pressure for time, we just need to make a decision and then one of the lucky elected people at this table could volunteer or I guess be vulnerable to a chair.
Well, I certainly, you answered one of my questions, I certainly like the one person, one vote.
Yeah.
And being small doesn't make our, our issues any less than a bigger entity, it actually makes them more impactful, in my opinion, so I like that if we show up at the table, we're gonna be heard.
Yeah.
My question.
How are the dues determined? Is it by city size or is it, you know, everybody pays flat rate?
So there is a, so the dues themselves are broken into three or four separate categories, the general dues is assessed by population, but there is a minimum, and I think you hit the minimum of three hundred dollars or what have you. There's a general dues component and we use that chunk of money mostly for match funds and we are able to match grants from the contributions across the region, we're able to match funds at almost a hundred to one in terms of how much that, those funds we're able to leverage to escalate our budget to be back into the area. There is a chunk in there that is transportation-related funds for matching funds on transportation and a little bit of that money also goes into what we call a special projects fund and what that is, is to, you know, save that up in a pot of money that is not tethered with federal rules or state rules. So if the board says we want to explore something that is creative and out of the box and different, they can authorize me to spend those funds to go and do something. So I've only been at the agency right about two years now, it's been all COVID all the time, so I haven't been able to be out saying hi to people and what have you. But I think the last time we tapped into those funds, the board had agreed to doing a housing feasibility study some while back before, before the state required a housing feasibility studies to take a look at the housing stock.
I would assume you have a website that we could go and look at and see what kind of things you've matched for and what you've done.
We have a website and it is really horrible, I'm just tired of the office or the three weeks ago, but yes, we have a website, you're welcome to go there and sit back from the screen a little bit because it has this blazing mustard yellow covering most of it, we're picking those off one at a time, but, but yes, it, it will give you at least a flavor and it has all of our board meeting minutes and agenda and all of that on there as well.
So the membership dues, is for like, is it council members only or is it for people in the city?
So the membership dues is to have the city be one of the member entities for the Council of Governments, but my agency serves on behalf, and so the, so the citizens of the city would benefit from it, it has to be an elected person who sits on the board.
Okay. Okay, so that kind of brings into the question I was going to ask. So say I had an issue that I wanted to care about or I might help with, or, so I would have to bring it to my one fourth person first and they would bring it to you, or is that something that we would go on site and look at and say, can I talk to somebody in this department to help me with this situation?
I think it, it's gonna be hard for me to eyeball that one based on what you're asking. So, so if you are a service recipient, so for instance, we administer the senior and disabled services program, and so if you had a question about how old do I need to be, what does my income need to be, how do I make myself eligible, my next door neighbor is a disabled senior and needs a ride somewhere.
Okay.
You don't have to wait for a board member, you call, call our senior and disabled services.
That's what I wanted to know.
But if you said, hey, a couple of us have gotten together and we are interested in seeing whether or not we could get a Wheels on Wheels route out here or what have you, that would be great for your board member to just call me directly and say, hey, who do I talk to, can we make this happen? What would that look like?
Okay, because I'm senior and disabled, so that's why I'm asking.
There you go. Or, or if in the course of this conversation, the city council here said, you know, we're struggling with our water issues, we dry up, we dry up six months out of the year, I'm curious whether or not the COG could do something about that or one of their city planners could help us leverage state funds or maybe help us with the contact over at Department of State Lands or whatever, that we might be able to help partner in that.
Exactly, and we would love that, sincerely.
Well, I, I would like to hear from the council, would you like me to put this on the agenda for next time to kind of formally choose whether or not we want to do this?
Yes.
I would, yeah.
Okay, good.
I do have one more question though before we move on, and so we've been a member since nineteen eighty, it looks like, that's what it was written in my notes here.
Yeah, so the, the Articles of Agreement were signed by the city in nineteen eighty.
And I was just curious, do you know of any services that, you know, we've utilized through you guys or, I mean, has there been anything that you know of that the City of Soderville has requested from you guys?
So I, I do not know when the City of Soderville relinquished their membership and I haven't been around during that period of time. What I can say is our, like our seniors and disabled services program, we provide that throughout the region, there, so member, not a member, doesn't matter if you have people in Soderville that qualify, there is an eligibility-based program and it's a liberal grant. Same with most of our community services programs, like our senior volunteer program and some of our ride work, we operate a brokerage called Ride Line for people who are on Medicaid who need to get to medical appointments. So none of that stuff is membership-based and you have to qualify in terms of being on Medicaid, but you don't have to be a member of our agency access.
Right.
So you are getting some of those services in your area right now. Being a member gives you both a seat at the board, it gives you quality time with me, which is probably something.
Got to have it.
No, but, but it gives you a seat at the board and it also then gives you access to any of these ad hoc services, so, and a place where you can also be an advocate. We're, we host right now a nonprofit that's the Cascades West Community Development Corporation, that is a group right now that is exploring wetland issues. We're looking at whether or not we could be owners of a public wetland mitigation bank so that we can drive down the cost of wetland credits so people can actually build in the region or at least in these two counties of the region. So there are a number of other subcommittees and places that we're involved in and it just opens up that door for access.
Okay.
And I'm always happy to come back to if that's a council you end up having other questions or if you want me to come back to the next council meeting, if I can make it on my calendar, I'd be happy to come.
Thank you.
Does it have to be a council member or can it be a representative official?
So, yeah, the Articles of Agreement said that the member agencies have to provide an elective official.
Okay.
Which is the, quite frankly, that's the other reason why we host the city managers' meeting, because city managers sometimes have a different perspective on what's going on in a city than you.
All right, well, I will consider this tabled until the next meeting. So unless there's any more questions to go over, that's good. All right, thank you, Ryan.
Sure.
If you want to stay, you can, if not.
I'd love to.
Okay, go for it. So the last thing I wanted to go over kind of dovetails into the next section where we will be talking about water policy specifically as it relates to Waterloo. So some of you know that I already work like three jumps beyond this, I've worked thirty hours a week as the city recorder for Soderville. Now, it is kind of, I don't know, maybe fortuitous, someone call it, that the City of Waterloo is also currently hiring for a city recorder, that position only works six hours a week currently, and that is something that I am considering applying for because that would fit in. One of the jobs I work is political consulting and that ends when the campaign season ends and I need to replace that somehow. So I am considering applying at the City of Waterloo and I just wanted to make sure the council was okay with that occurring. I know there are some potential conflicts that occur, that could occur when somebody is doing both things, but I think there is a kind of unique opportunity at the moment because we are. because we are going to be discussing today and then in the future with the Waterloo City Council, potentially partnering with them to build a treatment plant and a water pipeline to the city of Sodoville. And having one project manager kind of coordinating that for both cities is just kind of a unique idea to put forward. It would be very important to say for right now that me trying to apply to be their city recorder isn't going to be tied to anything happening with a potential city water system there. They could say, yes, we want to, but no, we don't want a water system, or, yes, we want a water system, but we don't want geos. So those two things aren't going to be tied together, but it's an opportunity that is kind of unique for this moment. So does anybody have any hesitations about me potentially applying for that position?
So working both jobs?
How many hours did you say?
Six hours a week there.
Six hours?
Yes. Yeah, that is, that, yeah. I'm not saying I'm going to. I just, I'm going to apply. It's an interesting idea, that kind of thing.
And we appreciate your transparency.
Exactly.
Okay. Well, then we'll head to the public works report. JD can start off, and then we'll go into the water policy section, so.
In June, the wells produced 400, a little over 463 gallons. City sold 400, a little over 448 gallons, which was a difference of about 14,685. Water systems, as I mentioned before, we try and keep below a 9% loss. With these numbers, our loss was 3.17%.
Wow, nice job. Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Does that have anything to do with our new meters?
It has everything to do with our meters.
Yes, not so many leaks with these meters. Before, they came to thousands of gallons of water. It's just unreal.
I found a leak today. I found several leaks last week. Today's leak wasn't as big as I thought it was going to be, so there's something else going on that I gotta try and figure out.
So JD, how do you determine whether it's a leak or whether it's?
Actually, these meters are smarter than me, and they say leak. They say burst. And then I go and do a little research and looking, and so far we've been on every one.
So somebody's just letting their hose run?
That or a toilet's leaking, constantly running, and they don't realize that, how much water that wastes. And when I go and say, hey, you got a apparent leak, and no, 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 well, maybe you got a toilet leak in, or old tub dripping.
Or what was that one where the son had, where the kid washed his thing or?
The lady's kid came in the house and then stepped in a dog mine, and she sent it back out. He turned on the hose, washed his shoe off, never turned the hose off. So the next day, when I'm, and I'm only reading once a week unless I see something. Then I'll go out and read two times a week maybe. But generally, I'm just reading them once a week. I'm reading the production meters daily, or every day that I work.
So prior to the meters being installed, it seemed like well three had the biggest issue? Are you still seeing that, or that was where we were losing most of our money before?
My predecessor thought there was a lot of water loss? No. We're losing between, what I'm seeing between all the wells and the compound is about 200 gallons a day, which isn't hardly anything compared to what we're.
So you're not seeing anything off of number three? You spent a lot of time and effort before you tried to find something that wasn't there?
And you didn't find it, yeah. I'm not.
Because it didn't exist?
Huh? I don't believe it did.
Oh, that's fascinating.
So, yeah, leaks been found frequently, and most of them are being repaired or stopped the same day. So like, with the old meters, a lot of the stuff that these meters are picking up the leaks, the old meters wouldn't even see. So we're just losing that water. The old meters wouldn't even pick it up, so.
Yeah, we often found a leak when somebody got a huge bill.
Yeah, a month or something down the road. So, I mean, the system's not perfect. It's still got some issues and some bugs that I'm trying to figure out, but it's obviously saving us a lot.
Cool, great.
Onto the parks. There's been a little bit of mischievous or dan, or vandalism being found over the park. The exterior water faucet, somebody broke trying to make it work, I think. I got the parks to fix it, but I'm not going to put them on it unless I need to use it. Somebody found one of the toilets disconnected from the water supply. Fortunately, whoever disconnected it did not leave the water on. That could have been a mess. There was an incident recently with a soap pump. A young gentleman went in the bathroom, got a paper towel, filled it up with all the soap out of the dispenser, and threw it in the tree. Not a big deal, but still.
It's wasted.
Minor stuff. I've spoke to most of the council and showed you guys some trees down below that are of concern. I requested a bid from Griffin's Tree Service. Once I get that, probably next month, I will present to you guys that and see if you're okay with looking at that safety issue. Streets, sorry, haven't done it yet.
Sorry.
I'm hoping to get on it within the next two weeks.
Every day I go home from work, I'm like, it's a date.
When I get a date, you will know the date, so. The TMDL report, Alex has taken that over for me. He's put in a rough draft to DEQ, and we're hoping to hear something back from them by Monday. If not, I'll probably give him a call. The WMCP has been past due for a while, and I need to call them next Monday and see what arrangements we might be able to make or work out. It's just, well, it's a water report that was done improperly by my predecessor, and it's hard to find time to do all the research for that one. I'm trying to keep the city from being a COVID violator. And we, I've requested help from OAWU at one time for this and brought the council that they wanted $12,000 to work on the report. So I need, that's something I'll be working and trying to figure direction out next week. And maybe I'll lean on Alex with that if we get the other report correct, so.
All right. Do you want to move on to the city? Oh, sorry.
Have we got any idea when we're going to put the fence up? Tennis court?
No, I don't.
We need a couple more volunteers for that, because we, we don't want to put up a bars up until we get ready to put the fence up too, because that way people are using the monkey bars and try to tear the stuff apart on us. So we need, need at least, I told JD anytime he wants to do it, I'll help. I don't know if I give my son help with the excavator or not, depending whether he's got time, but we still need some manhandle people.
If it's on a weekend.
Yeah.
See, if you do it on a weekend, then I probably won't.
Yeah.
Or I could comp time or something.
Yeah.
As long as it's not good riding weather.
And we still, we still should find out for sure exactly if we need any more parts for that.
I had an inventory for that one time, but it's been so long ago.
Yeah, if you need any help, any help in the toy, I'll come out and help you get that inventory, so you get the parts. We give it, give it crew to do it, and like, we just get it done. Shouldn't take that long to do it. I would be surprised if anyone pushed the city to put a fence around that thing. I'd like to see it put up someday.
Let a barrier grow up to kind of help prevent balls from going up and down.
Yeah. Still got to adjust the benches next to get them up there. We got benches around the corner.
Someday.
Yeah, I'm going to get my ticket back right against IU.
So the next one is to look at our city water policy as part of this public works item. So we, basically what we need to do is by the end of the year, have a concrete plan that we want to submit to the legislature and say, okay, we're going to do this, and this is what we're going to do. So the start of the next session of Congress and the next long session of another state of assembly, we can go, okay, this is what we need. Please give us the money to do it, and just have that be decided, because it's been 30 years, I think people are tired, and now is a unique time to get help for the kind of project we need to do. So we have been talking to everybody who is running for office, all of the Democratic and Republican nominees for legislature, Congress, and, sorry, Lynn County Board of Commissioners, just to let them know, here's our options, here's what we can do, here's what you could do for us if you get elected. And we've had some interesting ideas come out of that. There've also been, you know, very many years' worth of studies about what to do about solving Sodoville's water issue, so much so that we're kind of like a case study. Everybody in the Capitol knows about us. We've talked to people, people who don't even represent us, and like, yeah, we need to work on water next session. Like, oh, yeah, we know about this, so. It's just funny that we're this case study, but time, time to go from case study to success story, I think.
I would agree.
Interactions have shown people to really be willing to listen and giving a great opinion now of Sodoville, which I'm real pleased about. It's been very painful to go to these happy, smiley things, but I think it's, it's been really good on turning.
So some of the, the ideas we just want to look at and make sure we have some good council authorization to go forward and just kind of research and get nailed down over the next few months. One is digging additional wells and then investing in long-term storage facilities. I know that's not really super feasible. JD's shaking his head accordingly. It is just an idea that was proposed, and I just want to make sure that was one of the ideas that was proposed. I think there's, there's just seen this, there's, the aquifers are not going to fill up during the dry season.
And just to kind of give you an idea, our current reservoir is 150,000 gallons to a rough, I'll order that. Basically, I put out a rough bid, asked for a rough bid on getting another one, and it was, if memory serves right, it was 155,000 plus taxes and transportation, and then there was another 77,000 tied to putting it together, because obviously they can't bring that big of a tank in at once. And then with that being the same as ours, it only gives us eight days of water. So eight, nine days of water at the current rate of the water's in use. If you've got a million gallon reservoir, which would be considerably larger, that would only last you 66 days. That still doesn't get you through, and that one would be considerably more expensive.
But JD, have you ever gone through the water study that they did?
Alex has gone through it, I have not.
Because I've been going through it.
I have too, essentially, times.
And there's some, you know, for one thing, the water study, there's people that think that it wasn't done right.
Right.
And there's even comments that say.
With additional wells, they need to be tested.
They were paid that this company was paid for faulty reports. And we paid $67,000 out of the grant to do these reports. And there's also a guy here that did a final statement that says that if we would have put well six, which would be well six, online and put a 250,000 gallon tank, that he felt like it would solve our water problems.
Well, a 250,000 gallon tank, if 150's giving you eight or nine days, it's not going to give you another week, and it's not going to refilter in that time.
But what if you had another well? You know, we've got a lot of wells in the city, and the report that was done on the well down there that we was looking, the city was looking at, making number six well, they, for some reason, they thought that that well only.
Would be a primary.
Supply the whole thing.
Right.
But with the output of it, it would have, plus the 250,000 gallon tank, it would have.
My understanding of that, Ryan, is that that was tested during the season when all the wells are going well, and was not tested when all the wells are dried up. That's when it needs to be tested. That's when they would know for sure whether it would be able to produce and keep it going.
Well, I've got three wells that I can hop into right now and get water out of. So I think a lot of it depends on where we're taking the water from, because there's other aquifers.
I am called, not Ted, Chuck Nugent, thank you, for a personal reason, because I want to find out if there's a well on my property, and taking where the grain is out, and understanding that he sells drilling understandably, but I would also consider him kind of an expert in drilling. He said, you guys have lots of water up there, you just need more wells. And I think that's a pretty simplistic response, but it made me kind of think about, you know, maybe we do need to look into the wells that we have that are currently functioning, or the wells that we've looked at before. I mean, it's, is it going to be a piecemeal thing, and we're going to have a lot of wells? As long as we have the water, I don't think we care really where it comes from. So I like the idea of that being one of the things we're looking into.
I know if you drive to some of the guys that are down at the bottom, down lower, they don't find out the water, and they're all supplied by a well.
And that's where well six, it was on lowlands, you know, compared to all the other wells which are, you know, up on the hillside. You know, if you get down to the flats, you know, from what I understood, it was capable of handling 23 gallons, you know, per minute. I don't know if you read the same, same thing in the report, but that's the way I interpreted it. You know, they tried to get 36 gallons per minute out of it to supply the whole city, and, yeah, it failed, you know, to perform at that level, you know, on a consistent basis. But they felt that 23 gallons per minute was sustainable.
Yeah, we don't have one well that does everything. We have to use several wells.
And none of the wells can run even near what their maximum rating, or what the water rights say we can run them at, they won't even go near that.
I think at 23, if you're doing like seven minutes on, 10 minutes off, or maybe it's the other way around, I calculated it out at one time, but it's about 150-some-odd thousand gallons a month. At 23 gallons, you know, like I say, on and off, you know. I think it's running three times per hour.
And if it works during the summer season, then that would be fine to supplement and keep us going?
I'm just saying, I agree with the Dina, you know, I think it's definitely something that we want to keep as an option, as, as looking at.
Get a grant, look into it.
Well, we already did. We already did. We, we need a better study than.
Yes.
And then tying it in is another issue. Do you have to have pump stations?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that was all part of what they were researching, you know, in the past. It just, like I said, I just don't think the interpretations were done correctly.
Yeah, my, my read of this, you know, looking at projects like I've done like this in the past, when you talk to an engineer or an attorney, they're going to answer exactly the question you ask them. But they know exactly what you're asking, and you don't, you may end up asking them a different question than you think. It's a problem. So, you know, we didn't ask, hey, is this going to work in the summer? That resulted in us not figuring out whether or not the well's going to go dry in a dry period. And, you know, there was some miscommunication between, I guess, the previous city administrator and the engineering team, and then with the state about, you know, is this, is this a primary oil well, or is this a supplemental well? Ultimately, a lot of this seems like there were administrative issues that resulted in the wrong questions being asked that corrupted the data beyond its feasibility.
I agree.
It would be nice to be able to see if we can go back to USDA and Business Authority and go, hey, that really got screwed up. Is there any grace to try and get this done again? And that's, that's a conversation that will continue. Now, things are kind of running smoothly now. I know the last six months have basically just been like cleanup mode.
Right.
So I'm not in cleanup mode anymore, I'm in do-stuff mode. Yeah, exactly.
I think that's what we need to do. I think we need to try to re-invent our findings, even if we, that well needs to be tested like September, October.
I would say late August, September would be ideal.
It's in the middle of the winter.
Yeah.
You know, I think we need to keep these other ones, you know.
In our back pocket.
On the table as well, but I really think that, you know, if, I mean, the primary thing, you know, the primary resource for the city of Sodoville is water.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, that's our primary income. So if we can keep it local, we're better off. If we got to do a tie, I mean, you know, for now and the future, then to keep our city viable, we got to do it. But, you know, like I said, we need to see what our options are.
Exactly. Well, next thing we'll go over again is the Intertight project with Lebanon. So that, kind of the, the standing recommendation from the report that went through was build an Intertight with Lebanon. And I have found exactly zero people who support that. Not the least of which reason is that base rates are probably going to quadruple. Everybody here is too poor to pay that. We don't want to pay $200 a month for a minimal amount of water. I don't know anybody who wants to do that in this town or in the council. It's just, it's not going to happen, sadly.
Well, and there's things in here that says that it's going to be so expensive. That it's not going to be feasible, but we would be better off trucking water still than hiring.
Yeah.
than hiring a lot of...
Well, some of it depends on who pays for it. We've talked to, everybody we've talked to is amenable to either getting money from the legislature or Congress or a mix of both to just give us the money to build something. People understand that there's a problem, that we can't fix ourselves, and there's a lot of political will right now to just fix what's going on in Sodoville. People are down to get money for a permanent solution.
That's encouraging.
And they are looking to us to come with some solutions.
Yeah.
And recommendations.
Exactly. This might come as a surprise to Waterloo, but the state has actually considered Waterloo as part of this in the past, routing the Intertight through Waterloo and then here or vice versa. Were you aware of anything like that?
No.
No.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, no, right, no, it's funny, reading some of all this history, we've got a book of what we've been talking about, your city has come up. And I did reach out to Business Oregon and USDA have been covering this with us for several years, and I said, "Hey, what if we built a treatment plant in Waterloo and piped it over here?" And they already had an answer about the cost preference. They said, "No, it's going to be way more expensive," which was interesting.
I don't think it would be more expensive.
Yeah, and I don't know where their numbers are coming from, but they're just saying that's what they think.
For, in '17, which is a few years ago, the raw water treatment system, standard 200 to 1,000 gallons per minute, was between 975 and 3 million. So if you could do a small, it would be the smaller end of that to supply Waterloo if they wanted and us, and the most expensive thing would be the piping. Going to Lebanon's four miles, going to the river's about three. But then, two, you got to look at, is that going to be a different agency? I can't think of the name right now.
Sorry, Katie. I'm sorry. I was going to say, they're planning on tying in down to Cascade.
Yeah, and we have to pay for all the pipe to get four miles from where theirs ends. And they want Lebanon, when we talked to them last, they want to put a 16-inch pipe in. I think what your study had was a four-inch pipe, and Lebanon is not willing to pay the difference. They would want us to pay the whole thing.
Right. Or in this case, they want the state to pay the whole thing, which if the state's paying for it, great, it doesn't matter. Yeah, I think I've mentioned to a few different people in here, if we were to pay for this ourselves, and the current estimate for the pipeline that I got from USDA and Business Oregon, and I don't know if they were talking about a four-inch or 16-inch, but they said whatever their version of the pipeline was was $6.5 million. If we just passed upon just the amount of our current property tax rates, we would pay that off in 764 years, just the principal. So obviously, we can't do that.
What is water driven by, whether water?
They don't...
Water was 100% well-driven, and that's the reason I brought, I asked a member of the Waterloo council to come here today, this is Dennis Scott, is that we think there is some common interest with potentially working with Waterloo to do that, but I want to make sure the council's interested in pursuing something with Waterloo, and Waterloo themselves needs to be okay, and there needs to be some very specific conditions set. One is that we're not trying to boss anybody around, we are here to be equal partners, to the state of Oregon says Waterloo has to initiate that, we can't initiate it on Waterloo's behalf, so we literally can't tell you what to do. Just want to make sure we're not trying to butt in and take over.
Oh, man.
The state is very clear that they think you're taking point on anything that starts over in your city. We're not coming in and taking over.
Well, we are having some issues with some of the wells.
Yeah, I've heard that in the past, that you sell your wells over that video, kind of not real quality. I've heard that you don't have videos.
They have their wells, and then they have to limit their usage because they go...
We know about water restrictions.
Yep. So the suggestion came from Commissioner William Tucker at Lynn County, who talked about some of the water problems Waterloo is having. So the idea right now would be build a water treatment plant in Waterloo. One, again, make it very clear, state or the federal government or a combination of the two would pay for that. Nobody here pays for it because nobody here has the money. Going beyond that, people in Waterloo would not be forced to participate in this. I know a lot of people like their wells, they like their septic systems, so if we build a treatment plant and a city water system is put in place that is, again, funded by somebody else, Waterloo residents will not be forced to participate. I think that's very clear to make sure.
And we're only talking water, we're not talking wastewater?
No, just water, no wastewater.
Potable water.
There are a few different ways we could govern that. It, you know, would be prudent to create a water district, possibly, that is an independent government agency that has its own elected board of directors. Again, that one would be all funded by utility fees, that wouldn't be enacted. I think water districts can levy property taxes, but the idea would be make it one that's only funded by utility payments, not by property taxes. So I understand Waterloo had a survey last year about city water, things like that. Waterloo residents don't pay a city property tax, they don't want to, right? Exactly. And they don't want a water system funded by property taxes. So a water district would be one that's created with all the infrastructure first put in place by the federal government or the state government, and then paid for in the future solely through utility bills. Could also be governed by a 190 agreement where, you know, there's a joint, you know, panel governed by Sodoville and Waterloo that controls it. We share resources, staff, time to manage it as need be, again, all funded by utility bills.
And we have to look at if we get the water rights, if we choose to go that way and we get the water rights to do that.
Yeah. So I think this is a very interesting proposal, a very interesting idea, a very unique time to get it done. So I just want to make sure if the council's interested in pursuing that at a formal level. Director Burns and I did speak with their city recorder and they were about this a couple of days ago, and the next step is that I will be going to their next city council meeting to talk about it and see, and again, they're going to have to sign off on it before the state even thinks about it. So, you know, I think that's a good idea?
I've thought it's been a good idea for quite a few years, since the wells are good and what we've been doing.
I think that's option number two, is what I think.
Yeah, two cities get more attention than just one.
Yeah.
I do, I just think that, you know, like I say, for option number two, you know, we'd have to see exactly, you know, how it's all going to come out, right?
Yeah.
So you don't have any residents right now that are on city water, everybody's on the well?
We, everybody's on the well.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't have any city water.
So stupid question that I asked already, and I forgot the answer. Where would the water come from?
Sandy and River.
What's over there?
So, do you have any general comments to offer, just kind of as a member of the leader in Waterloo?
Are we looking at water rights, and if they would allow, if the state would allow you to draw a mark in the river?
That's something that would have to be discussed, and I, Business Oregon said that, yeah, that is something that would be considered as part of it. Just because we say we're going to do this, we still need to get the water rights. So that is something that Business Oregon has already prized, needs to be part of the research process.
I wonder if we talked to the county also, because they might have an interest in it with their huge park campground they have there.
It's possible. Yeah. So what will happen ultimately if we sign off on it and Waterloo signs off on it? Then the regional solutions team for the region will be convened, and then we will all sit at the table and go, "Okay, here's what we want to do, how do we get it done?" And then they're tasked with helping us get it done, and making sure we get the money to be able to do it. And then ultimately, hopefully by the end of the year, we have a plan that we can take to the state and the feds and go, "Okay, here's how much it costs, give it to us."
Right. That's all we need, is more detail, right? Exactly, exactly how we're going to be able to pin it in to his point, and are we going to be able to get water rights?
Yeah. That would be covered by the regional solutions plan.
Right, so...
And this is probably a very detailed question and not the time to ask, but when you talk about treating the water, would that be fluoridation? Or do you have to...
It would probably be chlorine. Fluoride, no, I wouldn't think.
That's what, I mean, I want water, I want to be able to water my lawn and have a garden, but I, one of the things about Lebanon that I'm kind of wrinkling my nose in is I don't really want a fluoridated water, so...
Yeah, it would try, there would have to be some sort of treatment. I would assume there'd be some coronation, and possibly there'd have to be a couple of coronating stations closer to here, because it's not going to push it all the way over. To get a right amount at the end of the hard lines, we'd have to have a station or two, possibly.
That's part of the problem too, our water, some of the best water around right now, so it's hard to give that up.
And what water rights do we have in Sodoville currently?
Just to our aquifers that we're using, probably?
We have three different water rights. One of them covers well three, four, and five, one of them covers well one, and the other one covers well two. I do not have their numbers, but if you need that, I can get that to you.
So if we was to use another well, would we have to get water rights for that?
Absolutely.
And I know when we put well number three online, we bought that from a resident, and being so it was out of state limits, that we had to own the property and the east end up to it. So we, like Harrington's got two monitored wells up on his property that no one used the water off of, they're there for nothing, after blasted and caused damage to wells, had monitoring wells up on there. I guess there's two wells up there that aren't for monitoring, they're not being used, but they're yet, I don't know if we could get the rights to actually use that water. But if you get Harrington to let us do this, but the water's there, but, you know, I don't think that would allow us to use wells off our city properties.
When I met with Mr. Harrington some time ago, at that time, he was not really willing to work with us at all because of the people that were here prior.
Yes, but they were not here and made the weekend, you know. I know Tim's a good friend and Tom Harrington and...
I know it's been a little bit of time, so...
Right, so chances are, if, but I'm not, again, I'm not even sure the state would allow us to use those wells because they're not in city property.
So if somebody's got a well, like they've got three wells, do I have water rights on three of those that I can...
I'm not even sure if you, private wells have water rights to them or not, I don't know. I've got a well on my property that was drilled in, what was that, was 73, I don't think we got water rights to that, but I got a well.
I don't know if it's different by county, but I have friends that are trying to get water rights for their own farm.
Yeah.
Just because they have wells.
It's very hard to monitor a well, so I don't know.
I know if you're on a creek or a river, you have to have them, but I don't know about the rest of the waters.
Yeah.
Well, do we want to have a formal motion to consider partnering with the city of Waterloo to create a joint water system? This will be one that, again, Councilor Jackman will have to abstain from because he's currently making money off our water solution, which is trucking in.
It's costing me money, right?
That's true.
I think it needs to be one of our options.
I think we ought to, I think we ought to go, you know, if the council, if this council agrees, I think we ought to check it out, see if it could be feasible.
Yeah, I don't want to be pushed into it, like, kind of like what we were trying to get pushed into Lebanon, but I would like to see it as an option.
Yeah.
So we have a motion to address this issue and see what feasibility is of it.
I make a motion that we check into the feasibility of a partnership with Waterloo as far as maybe having them go forward with a water treatment plant and help them to supply Sodoville with water.
I have a second to that motion?
We'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm staying. We'll get hearings.
Okay, we got a couple of ordinance hearings now. So your ordinance script is there for you?
Yes, I know, I've been regretting this all night.
Okay, I will now open a public hearing to consider the ordinance of the hearing will be conducted as follows. I will make an opening statement and state any ground rules. This will be followed by disclosure of export, contact, or conflict of interest on the part of council members. City Recorder Alex Mahadon will present ordinance. Council members may ask questions of the speaker at any point of the hearing. The public will have the opportunity to ask questions during their public testimony. Okay, going down. For testifying, please give your name, address for the recording. Please, those testifying, testifying, please give testimony related to the application and be as concise as possible, although this is not necessary. Most hearings, we may ask to limit your testimony to no more than three minutes. Does any member of the audience have any objection to the city council or jurisdiction in this matter? Does any member of the city council have a conflict interest with regards to this request? If so, please indicate by any, by any of your conflict interests and leave the table if necessary. Has any council member had pre-hearing contact with any party involved in the case? Is either against the proposal? If so, please explain your pre-hearing contact.
I will go ahead and say that what we're talking about here today is transforming our park rules into an ordinance, right? I know they're a resolution and can't really be enforced, but they need to be an ordinance so that they can be enforced. So the structure of this comes from some best practices and then some conversations with councilor about councils, about what they would like to see in an ordinance change. And then, of course, Mirror Perry and I did sit down with the person who had an event last week and spoke at length about kind of our plans about what we're going to do. So those were some of the communications that were had before. And then Councilor Adina was also one of the people who had talked with me a little bit about what they want to see in an ordinance as well. So this is supposed to reflect staff comments and comments we've had with members of the public about what they would like to see out of an ordinance, so there's that.
Does anyone on the council staff have any questions? Okay, so are you going to read the ordinance or...
Yeah, so I'll go over what we're here to do today. So we have a set of park rules that were passed in 2012, and there was a resolution enacted by the council that created a list of rules, but the rules aren't currently set up as an ordinance. So right now, if somebody violates one of these park rules, and I call the sheriff, they're going to say, you know, "What ordinance did they violate?" And I'm going to say, "Well, it wasn't technically an ordinance." And they're going to say, "Then we technically don't care." The agreement we have with the Lynn County Justice Court in Lebanon says that they only prosecute offenses against city ordinances, so if somebody comes on the park grounds right now and violates the park rules, there is nothing we can do. So we need to do something about that. It's a pretty simple case here. So the idea was mainly to just take the rules we have and then adopt them into an ordinance. The big change was adding some additional provisions about how, what kind of agreement needs to be made with people if they're going to use the city park for an event or to do specifically sales, so operating concessions, soliciting or selling or vending anything, and then participating in activities. Right, it's a pretty common practice for there to be a fee. Right now, we don't have a fee for use of city facilities, and so this basically says there's going to be a fee, and that'll be in the fee ordinance. We're not putting the fee in this ordinance, we want to put all the fees in the same place. And then it also says that anybody who's going to use our city parks for selling or anything like that, they need to have their own insurance, which is, again, a pretty common practice, and also indemnify and hold harmless the city. Under the current rules, the city recorder just assigns any agreement just with the authorization of the council. The assumption is that if somebody's, the ordinance is kind of the council saying, "Here's what we want to do." The city recorder then says, "The council already agreed to this person who wants to apply." Now, I did have one thing we can talk about. You all got a version of the ordinance today, and it was also passed out here. That is one word difference from the one that was sanded out last week. The title of the city's chief executive officer changes every few years between administrator and recorder, it keeps bouncing back. So all over the place, every other ordinance or resolution I read, the title of the city recorder or administrator is different. So there was one part in the ordinance that have been originally released that still said administrator instead of recorder. Now, I want to make sure we can point out, and this is some education for members of the public, the city charter says you're allowed to make a change to an ordinance that's already been published, provided it doesn't substantially change what's going on here. So we couldn't add additional provisions like, we couldn't add fees into this on the fly, but we can change the word administrator to recorder because we're just changing the title, and that's not a substantial change, that's already been agreed to by the council. So that's that. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a question.
Yes, there is.
When it comes to like, you know, we had that problem with that car that got trashed out there, is there anything can be done where the city has more authority to have a tow company come out and get it and take it instead of all the hassle that was going on with it?
No, there are other ordinances and laws that apply to that, kind of beyond that, there are solid waste and other kind of refuse of littering laws that already apply, so this isn't... uh, kind of refuse of littering laws that already applies. So this isn't, isn't something that needed to be addressed by that.
So there really wasn't much change to convert to ordinance other than basically a declaration.
Yeah.
Other than charging the fee.
Yeah, is charging the fee and making sure that people get insurance if they're going to do this and indemnifying.
That's per vendors, right?
Yep. Um, oh, and the other change was there that right now we have a rule that says you can't advertise, uh, on city parks except by putting stuff on the board. The one change I added to this was to allow, um, specifically, um, I can waive that for government agencies or associations in which the city is a member. So ELUCC wants to have a booth exactly where they, they come up and advertise, here's what, you know, we do. Call 811, you know, before you dig, uh, we wouldn't charge them a fee. They can just come up and do it.
So we have to have a motion on this?
Uh, so yeah, we'll just keep going through the script.
Okay, let's see the script here. Okay, so who do I have in the script here? Does anyone on the council staff have any questions? Public testimony. All persons wishing to testify on behalf of the ordinance will now testify. Remember to give your name, address for the record. Okay.
I have a comment.
Oh, yeah?
Sorry.
Go for it.
Um, uh, thank you for allowing me to talk. Um, when we were talking about the citywide.
Yes.
Having a little bit. Okay. Does that also include they have to provide their own insurance? And we talked about charging them per table, per area, and, uh, so how would we handle that?
Alright, so the way that would be handled is if anybody wants to have a garage sale on their own property right now, they can do that. Um, if somebody wants to come and do a sale of their stuff on city property, then that's when this would apply. So everybody would have to pay their own fee for their own table.
Okay.
And they could probably jointly purchase to get an insurance certificate. We're part of, uh, City County Insurance Services and they provide a low-cost insurance rider that people can get. Like, you know, uh, one day to do a garage sale like that would be a hundred dollars. So you all could jointly pool that together and that'd be that.
Okay, and then my second question was, was my understanding that there is three areas that you post things to the public of the citizens of Sodaville? And beside your front door.
Yes.
Where are the other two down there on board?
We post there on the bulletin board and the other one we posted at the park across the street on the bathroom door.
So it's all in this area?
All in this area, yeah. And I posted it online several places. There's a, a Friends of Sodaville Facebook group and there's almost 300 people in it. So I don't know if you're in that, uh, but I posted on the website and I posted there for the, the few hundred people in the area that have joined the group.
That's way too many.
I know, right?
It goes clear to the river. It's stupid.
Well, the, yeah, so that's, that's where I posted it, just so people know. And that's it.
Okay, that's two. I'm going to have to go back to get to them to ask her public comments.
Yeah, you're going to have to. Do any members of council or staff have any questions? All people wishing to testify in opposition to this ordinance now testify. Please give your name and address for the records. Does council members or staff have any questions? Those persons who want to testify? Does anyone wish to testify in rebuttal of any testimony that has been offered? Before I close or continue the public hearing, are there any additional questions from council members, staff, anyone that has testified? Once the hearing has been closed, only council members may speak. Okay, hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. The city council will now discuss the ordinance and make a decision.
Sounds to me like something that we should have done quite a while.
Something we kind, something we kind of did almost all.
I mean, we got to have authority to.
The officializer. Yes.
Like I said, we got to have authority to push our rules, right?
Yeah.
I want to keep the city safe.
Yep, so we have a motion to adopt this ordinance.
If that, we'll just keep reading the script. Ah, not the script.
What is the script?
We got to go back to the script.
Follow the script.
I, yeah, follow the script. I know, I know.
It just says now the council will discuss this ordinance and that's a decision.
Okay, yeah, so if we want to do it, the, the motion officially would be I move to adopt ordinance 2205.
Steven?
That's the motion you need?
Yep.
Make the motion to adopt ordinance 2205.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Okay.
Alright, continuing with this item, there was a hope that, uh, we would be talking about like appointments to the city, uh, Recreation and Community Affairs Committee. The person who had planned that event at the city park last week said they were going to be here to come and talk to us and are not here today. So I wanted to make sure we, we have, we have an understanding of how we're supposed to be managing our parks. So the city charter again says the council creates committees, mayor nominates them, and the council confirms them. In 1980, we created the Recreation and Community Affairs Committee, uh, and another list of responsibilities that are printed below along with the original misfeelings from way back in the day. Yeah, that's in there. It's fun. Um, so right now, the, the city website says there's a parks committee, but the duties of a parks committee are really supposed to be under this committee. So the hope was to get people appointed to that. Should be noted that, um, the, uh, the list of people who are supposed to be on there includes a teenager, a senior, the school superintendent, and at least one person from outside the city, uh, to serve on this committee. And these, this committee was supposed to have between three to five members. So we get a teenager, a senior, the school superintendent probably doesn't want to do it. Mostly because the school superintendent doesn't exist anymore. Um, but I guess we would talk to the charter school to see if they want to have somebody there. Um, and then somebody who lives outside the city. So the person who planned that event last week was interested in doing that, but I think they should probably come to a council meeting to talk about it. Um, because the council might want to ask some questions during the confirmation hearing. So that was kind of why we put this here because they said that we're going to be here to talk about being on it, but they're not here. So you snooze, you don't get appointed.
Please have a parks committee.
Yeah, so the, the comprehensive plan wanted this to be the, the parks committee and it is still on the book as a committee that's supposed to be there. It's just vacant. There are several committees that were officially created that just aren't staffed right now. I think the only city committee that is fully appointed at the moment is the budget committee. Everything else is vacant. You want to be on the parks committee, please?
I told you, I did.
Yeah, well, we could do that right now if you wanted.
She's a teenager, right? At heart.
Well, uh, if you would like to be appointed, the mayor can appoint you right now.
It's up to the man.
Do you like to be appointed? Okay, well, good. I can appoint you then. You're now on the parks committee.
Alright, there needs to be a, a, a motion from the council to, uh, confirm Ms. Peggy Bishop to serve on the Recreation Community Affairs Committee.
That's a mouthful.
Don't we need other, uh, I mean, I mean, we do Peggy right now, but don't we need other people to?
Well, in order for it to meet, it does need to have at least three members, but this is a start.
If, if you don't want me, I won't do it.
No, 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 no. I think it's great. I'm just wondering, I mean, we could, one person, you know, a committee of one.
Well, a committee of one isn't going to be able to meet even, but it's a start. If we wanted, we could just delay it. She could.
No, that's.
Yeah, if you wanted to find some other people.
No, let's go ahead. She's good.
I'll, I'll make a motion to Peggy Bishop on the.
On the Recreation.
On the Recreation Committee.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm a great party worker.
Motion carries.
And I know other people not in Sodaville.
There you go.
Okay. Well, that's the end of that item. The next one is public hearing on ordinance 2206. So start the script again.
Same script, uh?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to dig it back now because I'm going to nail it. Yeah.
Yeah, one of these days.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
We also needed there to have been a motion to read the ordinance by title only. Can somebody make that ordinance?
Do it, do it, do it.
I can make a motion that you read it by title only.
There you go. And then that puts it back in.
I'm going to dig up with the script though. Hello?
And then a second by?
I'll second.
Alright.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And then I will read the ordinance by title only. Ordinance 2205, adopting city park rules and declaring emergency.
So that's this one. So now I, can I read the script for this?
Yep.
Okay, I will now open a public hearing to consider the ordinance. The hearing will be conducted as follows. I will make an opening state, statements, set the ground rules. This will be followed by disclosure of export, contact, and object interest on the part of members, council members. City recorder Alex Manhattan will present the ordinance. Council members may question the speaker at any point of the hearing. The public will have opportunity to ask questions during the public testimony. For testifying, please give your name, address for the recording. For those of you who testify, please give testimony, leave the application and be as concise as possible, although this is not necessary. In most hearings, we may ask you to limit your testimonies to no more than three minutes. Does any member of the audience have any objection to the city council jurisdiction this time? Does any member of the city council have any conflict interest with regards to the request?
Yeah, so Councilor Jackman is going to have to recuse himself from this one as well. Uh, this amendment, or this ordinance is about amending our fee ordinance. It's mostly about parks, but we are going to amend our, our water prices. So, uh, because he is a vendor that deals with water, he will have to recuse himself.
Okay. Does any member?
Don't worry, we still have you.
Does any member of the city council have any interest with regard to this request? If no, please indicate the nature, if, yeah, indicate the nature of the conflict of interest and leave the council table. Is this necessary?
You want me to go through it?
No, if you want. Yeah, and it's not really with me.
As any council member in pre-hearing, contact any party involved with this case, either for or against.
I should say the, this ordinance was initiated primarily, partly by, uh, Councilor Oliveras, uh, because, uh, she noticed there's a problem with our, our water rates. Uh, during water restriction, all the prices are supposed to go up for this tier. For some reason, it goes down. So that's why it's on here. Yeah, I know. Um, and then the other one again is the parks, uh, we talked about in the last, uh, ordinance is that we talked primarily council president Oliveras and Mayor Perry about this kind of mess we're in and the need.
Yeah, assuming that people would give you orders for using more water in restrictions. Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
So.
So does anyone on the council or staff have any questions? All people wishing to testify on the, on behalf of the ordinance will now testify. Remember to give your name and address for the record. Does any council member or staff have any questions? All people, people wishing to testify in opposition to this ordinance will now testify. Please give your name and address for the record.
I, I think I need to summarize it. So to summarize this, we're, we're doing, uh, a few specific things. Uh, one is we're amending the city, uh, fee ordinance. That's what we're doing here. The three things we're amending, one, uh, during water restriction, one of our tiers will go up instead of down. Uh, we will fix that.
Two dollars, a thousand, no?
Exactly.
No, over.
Yep, yeah, right now it goes down. So this is, this is the up.
Yeah, I know this.
Yep. Um, and that's, that tier number is currently in our non-restriction, but for a lower, for a higher one, so we're, we're just taking that number. It wasn't arbitrary. It's used in a different tier system. Uh, so then, uh, we look at using, uh, city parks and city property. So, uh, specifically, we look at, uh, sales at city parks. So the idea will be if you live in the city limits, uh, you would have to pay a $25 fee uh, to have a booth or a garage sale or that kind of thing. And if you live outside the city limits, you would have to pay a $50 fee. And then, uh, we also look at using the same thing for, uh, city hall. If you want to use city hall for something, if you live in the city limits, you have to pay 25. If you live outside, you have to pay 50, but we can waive it for other government agencies or associations that, within which we are a member. So if we want to have an ELUCC meeting here or AquaCo, you know, something like that, uh, we can just say, yeah, you're good. Come on, we want to have you in Sodaville.
That's fucked up for, uh, little Julie's birthday, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Just making sure that we don't have to go up there and kick them off our property if they're having a birthday party.
Yeah, well, there, yeah, this is about, uh, this applies to selling.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, just making a statement.
One's going to sell or take.
Right. Okay, so I know now I'm cutting public testimony set up again here. Also, people wishing to testify, it has ordinance, please now testify. Members, give your name and address. Any council members have any questions? Staff have any questions? And any people wishing to testify in opposition of the ordinance will now testify. Please give your name and address for the record. Do any council members or staff have any questions? Do any people wishing to testify? Does anyone wish to testify in rebuttal to the testimony? I need to record this thing. I'll tell you, it's just bad. Okay. Before I close and continue this hearing, are there any additional questions from council members, staff, or anyone that has testified? Once the hearing has been closed, only council members may, or staff may speak. Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. The public, city council shall now discuss the ordinance and make a decision.
I think it's about time. I'm happy to see it.
Another one of those rules that just kind of went by the wayside, so.
Yep.
Okay, yes, my last motion now to adopt this ordinance.
Well, yeah, first will be a, a motion to read by title only.
There wasn't already a motion, right? That was earlier, right?
Yeah.
No, 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 that was for the last ordinance. So this is for the.
No, I thought that was.
Yeah, sorry. We needed to do that last time, so we did it. We're doing it on time now.
Need to motion, do you need a motion to read, uh, ordinance 2206 by title only?
I make a motion that we read ordinance 2206 by title.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any, any proposal? Staying. Okay, motion carries. Okay.
And then the motion to adopt it.
Now we need, now we need a motion to adopt ordinance.
You didn't read the title.
Okay, yeah. Ordinance 2206, amending 1701 and declaring, amending ordinance 1701 and declaring emergency.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2206, amending ordinance 1701 and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
I second it.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You abstain again? Motion still carries. Okay. Okay. Now, that's all of that.
Okay, the last, the last big one is, uh, contract review board. So you'll just have to say, I call the contract review board session to order.
Okay, contract review board session to order. Where do I go with that one?
Uh, it's, it's at the very last page of your, your regular packet. So it's, it's a very small one. Uh, so.
Staff summary.
Yeah, staff summary. So, uh, we use Coons, Blask as an associates for our audit firm. This is the contract to have them audit us again. So. You make them, okay, yeah. That's it. No discussion. We're all good. Okay.
Second.
No, it's wild.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
And then you close the contract review board. Probably a record would close that in less than a minute.
Yeah. Now we got old business. It's any old business.
Uh, did you reach out to the county about the property tax situation?
Uh, no, I have not. I, I would need, I, I want to get, uh, I asked you to find out what the lot number is so I can contact them.
Alright, we'll get that to you.
Get that, get that to me and I'll go, we'll talk to them. Okay, so I guess now time for public comment? Okay, public.
Thank you very much. Okay, does he ask you no questions?
Maybe.
You said that our water bill would, uh, uh, not necessarily the amount would increase, but the amount used, like gallons. Cause it went from like 1590 per month to 2012. So that was going to change.
Spent in paper store, I guess.
Yes or no?
I'm not understanding your question.
No?
The new meters are more accurate than the old meters.
Okay, right, but when you first changed them, you said we're going to see a difference in how much water was used and that was because they needed to be changed now. Cause my water bill went up and I haven't used any more than I thought I had.
Right, because these are more accurate.
Okay, okay. Good to know. Okay, I just want to make a comment to everybody who made comment about the last time, and we've been dealing with this for two years, that, uh, I, as a citizen of Sodaville, don't want to deal with the city of Lebanon with having it brought in from Cascade Drive. Just making my opinion known. And also, I believe that the water situation brought on by the old predecessor of Alex's was given up too easily, given up on too easily. was given up too easily, given up on too easily, and there should've, could've been a solution found, but I just don't think that the council was given enough room to work a little harder on it. And, and I know I was involved in that, you were involved in it.
I'd just like to make a comment, I think that previous people that were kinda in charge of that whole thing misrepresented everything.
I believe so.
Total mess out of all of it.
I agree with it, because, because our, our well was tested too. The only thing, I mean, our well, my well, I'm using right now to irrigate my garden, and I get 55 gallons per minute. And mine is right down the hill from Ray's. The only difference between his well and my well is I have arsenic in my well, and you don't, Crowe. Okay, so that's the only difference, and we have a lot of calcium, but it's nowhere near our home, we don't put it in our home, it's away from our home, we use it for irrigation only. And I'm telling you, I agree with what your answer was from Ted Nugent. Anyway, when you said that, he said, you have lots of water in Sodoville, he's absolutely right. I mean, look at the pond up there, that boat, a boat he had, I mean, that was all groundwater when he put that pond in there.
The one on Tim's property?
Oh, yeah.
That's been there for years?
I, that's what I'm talking about.
I was a kid and it was there.
And, and we have a hole in the ground that fills up every year, and there's nothing we can do about it, because it, I, my three, I, I'm timing my thinker.
I had a gab.
I'm just saying.
It's my gab.
I'm just saying. I got my three things.
Sergeant-at-arms warning us, right?
Well, he interrupted you.
He sees us, now it's Sergeant-at-arms, so I handed that to her.
Anyway, I said what I wanted to say, thank you very much.
You know, Peggy, you'll make a comment. I've been doing a study on the water study, and it completely threw me off guard as to what happened there.
Yes.
The whole thing, but now it's over, and now we just gotta move on and figure out if there's water.
Ours was tested in the snow, just so you know. Okay.
All right, okay. Joe?
Go.
I know, I'm just sitting us in, but I do like the idea of the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments, I think that's something we should pursue as a, as a city. Along with Peggy, well, kind of, I don't like the idea of tying in with Lebanon, because that loses our little bit of control of what we have here, and once you start letting the state and other bureaucrats get into us, who knows what could potentially happen. I like the idea of cooperating with Waterloo, because we really only need the water in the summertime, like, and if we had these wells, we would still use ours through the year, and this would be like an emergency, so I'm just, we don't need an answer.
Like our public works, right?
Would we only need the water in the summer? Secondly, don't we already have a well that we can't use because it's contaminated or something? I just, I'm just throwing this out. And then with like land use permits to get to these wells or whatnot. My idea with that is if we're able to get money from the state or cities, like, why can't we like improve our, I'm gonna call it infrastructure, even though it's probably not the right thing, but like, you know, we're talking millions of dollars and even, you know, 150 to 300 to 500,000, I mean, that's easy money if you talk to the right people and have the right grants. And then, just an idea, and this is where I'll just end it, is when did we start hauling the water?
We have not yet.
We have, okay, okay, so we, we have it. Oh, and back to the wells, like what Mr. Nugent had said, I'm right off of Spring Street. Doug, he has a well, it's 100 feet from where my well's at, and I remember in September when I pulled the lid off, I could see water like 20 feet down, and what he said is, Spring Street, there's a spring running right underneath there.
There is.
And that's a lot like down by Jackman's property, like, there's a wet section always, usually even in the summer, I don't know if it dries up or not, but like, well, well location, or like, if we're able to drill a well, I don't know what type of pumping it would need, but to like even pump it up to one of these wells that, or containers we have, it's not.
Anyway, I just, I was, I was told in the previous, in previous by some people that there's, I don't know if that river's somewhere in Sodoville. I don't, I will drill, unfortunately, that well drill is now dead. But that white house on the end of your street down there?
Yeah, the others, old office.
Yep, well, the one right there on the highway, on the sort of cut-off road. That one there, when you were in the house in the summertime, you could hear water running under the house like fucking river. Excuse my language, but, I mean, you could hear this water come through, like, doing bleed in summertime. I don't know whether it's water or what it is, but there is water out there, so.
Answer two of your things. If we go to a municipal water, like Waterloo treatment or Lebanon, then the wells would not be used.
Okay, so I know the one with Lebanon wouldn't be used, but I was just thinking if we were sharing with.
We're talking about city wells specifically.
Right, yeah, city, city wells.
Because you can't, it makes the water, we do it as an emergency during those months, but.
I would just see that, that doesn't seem right if we already have our own.
Yeah.
I could say.
And yes, well, fire cannot be used because of iron bacteria.
Okay. And the other thing you were talking about, like, down there?
Yep.
That it's boiling out the ground, you know, they're around, they call this Sodoville for a reason.
It's a city water bill.
It's water.
Sweet water.
And that's something we've brought up with every single representative that we met, why do you think we're called Sodoville?
Yeah. We're sitting on it right here.
The city that, so we really are vested, I mean, I think there may have been an impression that we were kind of stubborn and we didn't wanna look at any other options, and I, I think we've helped kind of overcome that.
We were misled.
I'm trying to be very nice, but I think we got the impression out that we're open to suggestions, but we really love our water, and we wanna keep it as much as we can.
We're like Waterloo.
I do have a feeling that we're all kinda on the same, same page, and I was just impressed with them.
And they actually asked me that, do you guys agree on this? It's like, yes, yes, we do.
And then I guess, well, I know I went over three minutes, but I just wanna appreciate everything you guys are doing. Any more public comment?
One, one, one thing, way back we had well number two drilled. We had that well, we had that, we had three of them, which are square, they're witch water in that well, on that property site. They all said we had 100 gallons per minute of water at 75 feet. And that well was drilled, it went down 150 feet before you tested how much water coming out of that, out of that ground. Because at 75 feet, the wells will, will not make any money. Yes, so if we put another well in right next to that, it would at 75 feet, we'd be able to water it want, who knows, without having a wish. But we can't use, but do it, do it first, so he had 150 foot, had 125 foot of casing out there before he tested how much water had come out.
What a jerk.
I was, also after the time I was supposed to oversee this, well drilling, and he would not go touch the ground with the drill until I was on site. When I was up there, he was right down to 120, 125 feet, drilling that well. He put a well on, he put every 25 feet of weight down. He had no well on whatsoever. He's just, oh, let me, I found this, I found this, I found this, but, yeah, so, there again.
Any more public comment?
Yeah.
I was just wondering if there is any more public comment?
City council packets, if you wanna run for city council or do by August 30th, you need two signatures to get on the ballot and get them from you.
No, 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 no. Council reports.
Yes, I said that's the last public.
Oh, okay.
Council reports is next.
Am I making it?
Okay, yeah, so, the, I, we need to set me up to have access to our city online banking. I've been using, I think, Roger's bank, Roger's account, which she probably might have even know existed, but, yeah, I, I do not have access to that anymore sadly, so if I wanna get online, I have to have Adina sign in, we don't wanna have that happen, we want me to do that. So on Tuesday, we're gonna go to Chase Bank to get me set up for online banking, so what we need to have the council do is, it could just be that they're able to just give me something to go online. It's also possible that in order to set me up to have online access, they need, may need me to be a check signer, and that would, if we have the, the council would need to vote right now to allow me to be a check signer or have online banking access, just in case it needs to be a check signer. If it just ends up being that I need online access, then we wouldn't make me a check signer, but we need to have the council vote to permit both options. And the, the big thing to emphasize here, if I become a vote, a, a check signer officially, I'm not going to be signing any checks, because it is a really bad idea, it's just to get me an online banking account.
Do you think one, what's going on?
Yes.
And he could.
We've gone through the paperwork to get him, get it to, we got city access, but he can't use it properly by mail.
And I would prefer not, not to use my username and password to go on, because that makes me nervous. I'm happy to come up, but I think, and log in and sit there with him, but I think that's not a good waste of his time or my time.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, if we really want to have a good checks and, checking balance, unintended,